Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, May 6th, City Council Meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman McClatchy.
Here.
Alderman Cook.
Here.
Alderman Miller is absent.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I have the honor to do a proclamation for the McHenry Garden Club. These wonderful young ladies up here in the front wearing green has been a part of the garden club for years. I know many of you, and so it's an honor to read this proclamation at this time. In celebration of McHenry Garden Club's 20-year anniversary, whereas the McHenry Garden Club was founded in 2004 by resident Marita Sensen, after placing an ad in the local newspaper looking for like-minded women, the first meeting held in January, 15 ladies showed up, thus began an amazing journey. Whereas throughout 20 years the club has been in existence, the club has awarded scholarships for local students studying earth science topics, awarded McHenry residents with Garden of the Month awards, participated in many local activities, assisted in revising the garden of the McHenry post office, and joined the Chamber of Commerce in planting shrubs and flowers by the shops at Miller Point. Whereas the club has provided over 2,000 small flower arrangements at nursing homes, hospitals, memory care, and police and fire locations throughout the McHenry area by repurposing memorial flowers. This is a project that brings smiles by all recipients as well as members who create and deliver these arrangements. Whereas meetings also include educational topics, often presented by local master gardeners. Whereas each club members have held two major fundraisers to be able to support all the activities, flower shops held at McHenry West High School have drawn hundreds of people to McHenry to support the efforts of the club, as well as enjoying the great presentation by local floral designers. Whereas currently, there are nearly 50 members of the McHenry Garden Club who meet on the third Wednesday of each month at the Shepherd of the Hills Church. The McHenry Garden Club is affiliated with the Garden Clubs of Illinois, who consists of 146 clubs through Illinois. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the City Council and the city of McHenry go on record as recognizing the efforts of dedication of the McHenry Garden Club in expressing its appreciation and gratitude on behalf of the citizens of McHenry. Signed, Mayor Wayne John. Let's get a new photo, because I know a couple ladies weren't here. You want to do another one? I'll come around by you. Ladies, can you come on up and do another photo?
My name is Wanda Colmey, and I'm the president of the McHenry Garden Club, and we truly appreciate this. This is a bunch of gals, and actually, we're having our first gentleman join us this week, or next week, so I'm really excited about that, too. But we're a great group of ladies. We're dreamers, we're gamblers, we gamble on the act that we take little seeds and put in the ground, and they make us happy. We do enjoy all the works that we can do in the city, and the city has been great, the chamber's been great, and almost all the people that we've encountered have really enjoyed what we do, and we hope to continue on. We are, right now, we are from 14 original members, we now have 50, so I'm very proud of that. So thank you for having us here this evening, and I'll see you in another five years.
Thank you. Yeah, don't feel obligated to stay, you probably don't want to, to be honest. Have a good night. Huh? Oh, you're right. Is it off? Sun's like... All right. At this time, ask for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening? Ma'am? If you could just press the button up there to speak, thank you.
Testing, testing.
Hold on, there you go.
I appreciate the opportunity for your public speaking session. My name is Nancy Feike, and I'm here really because of the issue of Landmark School that came up, and I'm fully aware that the city does not own the building, it's a school board project, and they have assured people that they are not going to get rid of the building. However, anybody who's ever dealt on public boards know that the minute something isn't used, and it becomes an issue of why am I paying taxes on something that isn't used, the building could be in danger. Landmark School has that name for a purpose. It's probably the only icon we have left in the city, the downtown area, that really identifies us as McHenry. Its loss would mean the same thing as if you lost the Empire State Building in New York, or you lost the Alamo in San Antonio. It's something we look to and try to protect those things that give us our identity, and nobody wants to be unidentified, including the communities that we live in. So why am I here talking to the city about this? It's because I believe that on behalf of all of us, the city has a vested interest in letting the District 15 know how important this is. It's important as an educational facility, but it's also important to the realization that it is an icon in McHenry. And I've always said that historic preservation is not about the past, it's always about the future, and how you make the contributions of earlier generations go to the next generation. Because if each generation tears down the architecture, tears down the feeling of a community, we might as well all be living in numbered cities, because we're all going to look alike, and we don't want to do that, and nobody wants to live in a place like that. So I am urging the city, use your landmark commission, learn from them, let somebody connect with the school district, and take a stand that this is a building that is important for all of us, every school child that goes through there and has gone through there, as well as what we vision for ourself in the future. So I'm urging you to connect, and save the thought of, or impress upon the importance of certain things like these buildings that cannot speak for themselves. Somebody has to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Zach Walters? Please state your name and address for public record.
Hi, my name's Zach Walters. I'm at 1709 North Orleans Street. I wanted to just quickly bring up, I'm sure you guys are very well aware of this, but the crosswalk at the intersection between 120 and Oak Drive, obviously, an elderly woman was struck and killed there not too long ago, and I would say at least a few times a week, I see somebody almost get hit there. So if you're like going kind of past, towards there, past the IHOP, it's like a left turn, it's just a green light, so you have to yield to pedestrians. And I know you guys have put up a lot of signs there, kind of warning people about that situation, but the fact of the matter seems to be that nobody is paying attention. Like I said, like almost on a daily basis. So the older woman was almost hit, was killed and died. Myself and my daughter like to go biking that way, to go take, like over to Fort McHenry. We were almost hit, so she doesn't want to do it anymore, which is like a huge bummer. So I wanted to kind of inquire, I'm sure you guys are aware of that situation, but if it's ever been explored, to put a green arrow there, or anything else to improve that situation. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? All right, seen none. Moving on to consent agenda items 6A through 6O, I'm looking to see if council wants to pull any items for separate consideration. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I'd like to pull B and G, please. B like boy, G like George.
Okay. Any others? Mike?
I'd like to pull A and C.
Okay. Any others? Alderman Bassi?
I and J.
Any others? Might as well just do all action. All right, consent agenda items 6DEF, H, and then K through O, I'm looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Santee?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman McClatchy?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion on these items? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Item 6A was pulled by Alderman Cook, resolution authorizing continuation of the McHenry County Municipal Risk Management Agency. Floor's yours.
Yes, I'd like to ask why they want 12 years instead of four years. What's the problem with every four years, they come up to the council and redo it? Is it, you know, from my understanding, does that give it another, you know, 12 years of the same insurance company, or doesn't go out to bid, or, you know?
So, okay, so McMurma is a insurance pool we are a part of. There's seven? I don't have that in front of me, of communities around us that are a part of this agency. So the McMurma itself is going to extend for 12 more years. We aren't obligated to extend for 12 more years, McMurma, the pool is. So we can, anytime we want, we can get out with a year's, we have to give a year's notice. So it's not, we're not locking ourselves in for 12 years. We can, this is just so the pool can keep going and going on without having to bother all of our governmental entities every four years. It just, the pool keeps going, we can get out every year if we want to, so.
Okay, I understand that, but who's it bothering? You can bother us for four years.
No, and this isn't, and this isn't from them.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, and so this is the McMurma Board, so all of the, all of the other municipalities around, the board members on that board voted, it's part of the bylaws for that group, instead of every four years, you're going to, you're going to do every, extend it for 12. And I don't think anybody, anybody in that board had a problem with it, since we can all get out within a year, it didn't matter to us to go for 12 instead of four. It was just a, and the attorney there explained, none of the boards that are, none of these pools are going that short of a time now, they're going longer anyway, just to keep it, just to keep it going, to keep the groups going. So if we want out, we can get out regardless of whether it's four or 12 years. So I'm just passing on what I heard at the board meeting.
Correct, and I appreciate that.
Yep.
And the thing is, is that I don't like the 12 years. They can come back after four years, you know, nothing's cut in stone, and, you know, and I just have a feeling that, yeah, we could get out of it if we give them a year's notice, but why? We already got it for four. You know, we could do that in four, we could do it in 12. I like the four-year object. That's all.
Thank you. Alderman Bassi?
I think I know the answer, but I'm still going to ask it. Are the rates locked for the 12 years, or are they still going to go up annually?
So we're not, so, I'm not an expert in McMurma, but, so we have a consultant that sits there, and they go out, and they get the best rate, like we don't, I don't think that we're, that group is stuck with a, we're going with whatever insurance. They go every year and look for the best prices they can get every year, and try and get the best prices they can get. So it's not like you're going with this insurance company for 12 years. It's a, that group's, I think, shopping every year, trying to get the best deal they can. I believe, I don't want to tell you wrong, but I believe that's how it works.
I would concur.
Yeah, we're not stuck with, like, blank insurance agency for 12 years. It's, they're shopping and trying to get the best deals, every year, there's a whole, there's renewal every year, and they say, this is what the rates look like, and our insurance consultant expert guy that sits there, he's the insurance expert trying to get us, not us, the group, get that group the best rate, I believe.
Thank you.
Yep, Alderman Cook?
Is this board elected, appointed, what?
So each of the agents, each of the governmental entities has representatives on that board. So Anne Campanella is our head representative, so each, each, so McHenry, Algonquin, Fox River Grove, they all have a representative from that city sitting on that board. So they all have, and their employees, they're all employees, so, and they're mostly people like Anne, she's our public, she's our human resources slash risk management person, so she goes to that board meeting. I'm there because I take notes, and I'm the backup person for the city of McHenry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments by council? Anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment on this item? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve 6A as presented. Alderman Santee?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Bassi? Alderwoman Bassi? Sorry.
That's okay, I don't care. I'll second it.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 6B, ordinance amending section 4-6-8, subsection A, number of video gaming licenses of the McHenry's Code. This is pulled by Alderman Glad. Go ahead, the floor's yours.
Yeah, I just asked that we defer this until after we've had our discussions on video gaming tonight, and then we vote on this, because we'll have an exact number of what we're voting on, rather than leaving it blank and then filling it in later. I just think that's the proper order to do. That's all I ask.
Does the majority of the council want to do that as well?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So item 6B, I'm looking for a motion to...
We're still going to do it tonight, right?
Okay. Do it, oh, see, okay, got it, okay.
Just in the order that we were.
Got it, okay, all right. 6C is award, material supply contract to the Book Rock Salt to Morton Salt Incorporated of Chicago, Illinois in the amount of $92,280, 1,000 tons at $92.28 per ton, and approve a contingency allowance for a 20% overage on the contract in the amount of $18,456. I am looking for a motion to approve 6C as presented. Alderman Cook, go ahead, go ahead.
I think the price is too high for the rock salt, it's not treated or anything else like that. I noticed that you're not in the state bid, you just put it out for contracting, for these companies to bid on it. If you go through the state bid, you can get it for 16 to $20 cheaper. Same, basically the same people that are, who are in on the bid are, you know, Compass and Morton. I'd like to, I know you can't get in on the bidding process this year, but I would like to make a motion to have them go on to a state bid for the rock salt that they use the ice, and you have to have it in by March, end of March, middle of March, something like that, to get on the list for the state bid for salt.
Director Walsh?
Yeah, this year, as we have every other year, we've jumped on with 60 other communities for a bid, virtually every community around us, Woodstock, Algonquin, Crystal Lake, Richmond, Johnsburg, we all used to do it through a McHenry County bid. A few years ago, we combined with Lake County, and there's 60 communities that bid on this. I'm not aware of, or have not looked into the state contract that Bull Valley uses. I certainly can in the future, but if there's 60 communities together that are doing this, I'd have to look at their contract to see what's different in it, because I have to think that Crystal Lake, Algonquin, Woodstock, all these other towns, if it was 16 to $20 a ton cheaper, that they would also be looking at that. And I'll have some conversations at our next meeting when we're all together to have those discussions also.
Thank you. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, possibly we could get a comparison over the last three years, as far as what the state versus what the small group has gotten as far as pricing.
Yes, I can look into that.
I mean, this could be a one-year thing, and maybe it isn't, so we can just kind of get some history on it, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Alderman Cook?
Yeah, because the townships use them, you know, the McHenry township uses a door, all of, the townships that I know of, Greenwood and everything else. So, I mean, everybody's trying to cost-cut and everything else like that. Bulk salt is bulk salt.
Yeah, McDot is also, was one of the 60 people that bid on it, too, so.
Well, it just seems like with municipalities, they got a higher frame. I don't know why, but just try, you know, let's look into it.
I'll look into it for next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments by council? I am looking for a motion to approve 6C as presented. Alderman McClatchy?
Motion to approve C.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Bassi?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 6D, approve a resolution for improvement authorizing $85,163 of motor fuel, motor fuel tax funds for the Bull Valley Road. Oh, geez, I'm out of it today. Sorry. G. Yeah, I do, actually. 6G award a contract to Applied Research Associates Incorporated, ARA, in the amount of $83,400 to perform the 2024 pavement management study. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, just the fact that we did this study back five years ago, and we came up with a 10-year plan, and now we want to do it five years. I think a visual would be fine to check some of these streets out if it changed to Doing the laser and everything else, I don't think bases are going to change that much in five years. And to be honest with you, according to what was written in the agenda, we've done 26% of our roads in the last five years, and why would we be paying to have those monitored? I mean, if we have to look at roads that have been done in the last 10 years, we're in big trouble, if we have to go back and look at those and rate them. I just think to some extent, I think we don't need that, that contract at this time. It's the same outfit that did it for us five years ago, and I just assume that we just have staff go out and take a look at any roads that they feel that they've had questions or complaints on, or reservations from anybody as far as, you know, the change in any pavement surfaces, rather than spending $85,000 again for, for one of these type of studies. I think, I think it's expanded too much. If we were, if we had decided to do the roads again with the, with the pavement management study, then if nothing else, we should have probably kept off the last 10 years' worth of roads and done a study on the rest, and maybe we would have got a lot better pricing on it.
Thank you. Alderman McClatchy?
Thank you. Director Walsh, can you just explain what's involved in the study?
So they, they have a, basically a van with technology on it, lasers, you know, that drive over the road, they take scans of it, they take pictures of it, of each and every road in town, and then they rate it 1 through 100, 1 being the worst, 100 being brand-new paved. Yes, since 2019, we paved approximately 38 miles of road in town. Back in 2019, we had approximately 57 miles that were under 40. We'll call those the worst. I do believe at some point, I'm unaware of the 10-year plan, I've never, I have never seen it, so I, I believe there was some, but I mean, an actual 10-year list of roads, because it changes annually based on the money that's available to us. So I mean, I just think we're at a good point with what we have to do it again. I also believe at some point, there was council discussion of wanting to do this every five years to get ratings. We're getting to a point where, like, looking out to next year, we'll be getting to like the 33s. So there's a big grid in there, between, say, 33 and 50. This will give us an idea of, as we come up to those, which ones of those have gotten worse than the others, we can prioritize those to get done.
Okay. Thank you.
Obviously, I think it was a good idea, you know, I wouldn't have brought it forward to you.
Thank you. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I just want to state that in the last time that they did this, they rated roads from 0 to 100, and roads at between 40 and 60 are considered fair. They showed our pavement management at just over 50, going from 2019 to 2028, and I just want to show you that at $2 million a year, the pavement doesn't improve our quality for the city as a whole at all. It stays at the same level. And that's what I've been preaching, and what I brought up, I think, the last time we talked about roads, and that's the fact that $2 million a year is not enough to spend our dollars on roads. We need a lot more than $2 million. The only time we really took a big emphasis is back when we spent $4 million, it was a big jump, and that's why we got 26% of our roads done in the last five years, is because one year we did spend a little over, or just under $4 million. And the thing is, is we need to really look hard at our general funds and income of where we're getting our money, and allocate a lot more to our roads, because all we're doing is just spinning our wheels at $2 million a year. And I just think to some extent, if we're going to do this study, then I think the council has to say that, you know what, next year and the year after, and after that, we're going to spend four and a half to $5 million a year, if we're going to spend this kind of money on a study. I mean, why spend the money on the study if we're not going to do the job? And if we're going to do the job, we've got to spend a heck of a lot more than $2 million a year.
Alderman Santee?
Well, I understand what Alderman Glad is saying. What's on the agenda tonight is Applied Research Association to do this study. I don't see the discussion for moving forward from $2 million in budget this year to $4 million for roads. It's a great conversation, and I'd like to get to that number at some point in the future, but when this came to us, we had discussed the plan before, and we had agreed to do this five-year plan again. I can see that maybe after we go into, I would say, the 20th year or the 25th, 25th year, after doing these plans, and rating all the roads, even the ones that were just done, I'd like to see how well those are, those are keeping their service. I'd like to see how well those are keeping their surface. And we got on the right track with doing a program like this, where we're not just driving around with staff who is not, I don't know how to say it, but, you know, when I talked to Steve earlier about, you know, someone that's really not accredited to know roads, and this gives us an objective measure of our roads. And it's something that the public can see, we can all see, and it's a measurement that's not done by staff or anything internally. And it was a great scale to go back and forth on it over the last five years in regards to what roads are going to be moved, you know, what roads we're going to do, and what roads are set for like the next year or two. And we've been able to process more roads. We had a couple extra dollars to move forward with, because we were fortunate enough to get some good bids on construction costs. I just, you know, I look forward to, you know, continuing this type of research, because it's done a phenomenal job of rating our roads, and it's an objective measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bassi?
Hi, I just have a real quick question. Out of curiosity, if we did not spend the $83,000, and we applied this towards a neighborhood road, how much could we actually do with $83,000?
If we had made it a part of the contract, somewhere between a quarter and a third of a mile?
Of a road?
Quarter mile.
Yeah.
A quarter mile?
Yeah, I mean, roughly this year, it was right around $280,000 a centerline mile. I mean, if we just went out now to spend it, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't get that if it was a part of a big bid.
Right.
Yeah, so, you know, figure the 83. So...
Okay. I...
I would just like to say that, you know, we're doing, like, this year, we're doing about seven miles of road. If we can keep up about seven miles of road a year, that'll get us through 130 miles in about 20 years. That's about the expectancy of the road. If we can be paving our roads every 20 years, I think we're in good shape. I think that was the objective and the goal when we started this, to be able to do it every 20, to be able to resurface a road every 20 years. And that's the direction we're heading in. Yes, I will agree, over time, we'll need more money as costs go up throughout that process. But I do believe we are heading in a real good direction here with our roads. I think it's noticeable already in five years when you drive around town.
Agreed. Alderman Bassi?
Oh, I was just to say, I think the study that we have right now is probably not old enough, shall we say? I think it's still usable. And if we really felt that road needed to be redone, I think it would be the responsibility of every single person on this council to fight for their ward if they feel... We've seen, Alderman Glad, how many years? Seven, eight? Fight for Kensington? I would like to see this money spent more on a quarter of a road.
Any other? Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I just want to state, you know, we're talking about a program, and that's what we did five years ago. We started this program, and we started this program with $4 million a year. And we were told at that time that we were going to be spending $4 million a year. Now, granted, climate's changed and revenues change, however, we stopped spending that kind of money on roads, and we need to spend that kind of money. You know, to say that, oh, another 20 years, we'll be caught up. At $2 million a year, it shows that we're not. And yes, even Director Wirth said, there are going to be times that we're going to need to spend more money. And that's the thing, we have to spend money. If we're going to spend $84,000, $83,400, or whatever, on a management study every five years, then we have to be committed to spend the money for the roads. Otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels and wasting our money on these figures if we're not going to actually spend the money that we need to, to catch up. Because that was the whole idea of this program in the first place, was just to catch up, not to get to where we're doing a road every 20 years. Some of these roads aren't lasting 20 years. I can tell you that right now. I mean, I've seen a couple of them. Oakwood's a good example, that it was done probably 23, 24 years ago, maybe 25 now. And it's starting to show it's wearing terror. And ask one of the better roads that I've seen that we've done. We've done roads in the last couple of years that are probably less than 20 years old. When you're taking, you kill men off of 31, and you take a look, I can't remember when the bank was built, 2001, 2002. So, granted, those roads are 20 years old. We've got roads out there, however, that haven't been touched in 40 years, you know, maybe even longer. And in some instances, it's amazing how well some of those have actually held together, because some of those roads that people like to see resurfaced, I take a look at them and say, if they lasted that long, do people realize that when they redo those roads, they may not last half of what they've lasted? You know, because, let's face it, the product they use nowadays is not what they used 40 and 50 years ago. I mean, they don't hold up like they did in those days. So, at least from the experience I've seen of what we've had for roads. I can't support $84,000, $83,400, if we're only going to spend $2 million a year, because we're just spinning our wheels. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Santie?
I'm going to motion to call a question.
Thank you. Second on that? Alderman McClatchy?
I'll second.
All right.
Discussion?
No discussion. Right to the question. Just a roll call, just on the call the question. So, just a roll call, please.
Alderman Santie?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Bassi?
No.
Alderman Cook?
No.
All right. Any other? Looking for a motion to approve, no, I mean, just a motion to approve, and that's it, right? So, we use, motion to approve 6G. I'm looking for a motion to approve it this time. Alderman Santie?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman McClatchy?
Some moved.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santie?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Bassi?
No.
Alderman Cook?
No.
All right. Thank you, council. Moving on to item 6I, was pulled by Alderman Bassi, approve a parks special use permit application submitted by the Pearl Street Market for the day, for the summer markets and band concerts, May 16 through September 19, from PM to 9 PM each Thursday, to approve a special event liquor license in conjunction with those events, and to waive the associated fees for the reservation and the support services. Can we do that? Yeah, she pulled it, so. We'll just go and keep them separate.
Okay. And the questions are immediate.
Alderman Bassi, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I don't have to ask the questions for J, and then I'll be, these questions are also for H on the second page. My questions are directed to Director Hobson and to the chief. My only concern with this is, will the alcohol be monitored so that it does not leave the confined area, either Veterans Park or Miller Park?
We do our best to do that. I mean, for Pearl Street Market in particular, we've had it there for, I think, since 2013. You know, is there a guarantee that it's not going to 100%? There's not 100% guarantee that it's not going to leave, that somebody, there's a chance that somebody could walk down Pearl Street with a drink in their hand, or they could walk, again, for the next item, they could walk down the Riverwalk. We do the best that we can, both with the staff that are monitoring the, either that city staff, maybe officers on scene, or the people that are selling that. We try to do our best, but I can't guarantee you that alcohol will not leave that premise.
You will physically have someone there, though, like you said, staff.
There'll be signage in place.
Okay, there's a difference between signs and a human being.
Yeah, there will not be human beings at every entry point for Pearl Street Market, nor at every entry point for the Riverwalk, for those Sunday music. There won't be, there's not enough staff to be able to man all those areas.
Okay. Chief?
Yeah. Miller Point's new for us, Veterans Park is old. We've had zero issues with Veterans Park for over 10 years. We put extra foot patrols from the afternoon shift there. We will do the same for Miller Point. If we see a problem, then we'll consider an overtime assignment, but we would not spend the money until we actually identify a problem. We've had no complaints thus far.
Okay, thank you for that. But you will have a physical staff at these events?
No, we put foot patrols there. So, we utilize the afternoon shift that spends time there, but they do not stand stationed there for the entire event.
No, I understand that.
So, they will go there for 30-minute increments, and then that's it.
Okay. But there will be police presence?
Yes, just not nonstop.
Right. No, I understand. Okay, great, thank you.
I am looking for a motion to approve 6I as presented. Alderman McClatchy?
I will gladly move to approve that, and waiting for May 16.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Cook? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Santie?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda was pulled by Alderman Bassi, looking for a motion to approve 6J, approve the special use application from the McHenry Riverwalk Foundation to allow the consumption of alcohol throughout the grounds of Miller Point Park in conjunction with the music Sunday, band concerts beginning on May 26 through the end of the summer season, on September 29, from 1 PM to 4 PM, and to waive all associated rental and support fees for the event. I'm looking for, Alderman Bassi?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Santie?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Clarification on...
Hold on, hold on. Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Discussion, just the fact that, you know, if this was a longer event, I would say that we would have to rope it off as far as, I wouldn't want to see anybody near the water. But being at three hours, I would hope that nobody would get that inebriated in that shorter period of time. So, that kind of relieves me a little bit as far as people getting a little too intoxicated at that time of the day. So, I could support it because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Who pulled J, please?
Alderman Bassi.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Santie?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is action item 7A, Honduras Restaurant Video Gaming. I'm looking for a motion to approve a video gaming license to the Honduras Restaurant at 4113 West Shamrock Lane. And if approved, a motion to pass an ordinance amending section 4-6-8 subsection A, number of licenses of the McHenry City Code. Looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman McClatchy?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Alderman Santie, go ahead.
Is the owner of the restaurant here?
No.
Has, I didn't see in the packet, is there a menu to this facility? Usually, when there's a restaurant, it comes in, they'll...
Yeah. They didn't send me a menu. They got their liquor license in December, maybe? They came previously for their liquor, because they didn't think they wanted video gaming at the time. And since then, they've, I think they want to get video gaming to help themselves out, I believe. That's what their staff said.
If I may, Mayor, just for the record, you know, for public statement, if this turns out to be more of a gaming parlor, I would ask that we place an agenda item possibly to pull a liquor license in the future, because they're not here to represent themselves, so I'm concerned there. They say it's a restaurant, I want to make sure it is a restaurant, and I just want to make sure that it isn't a minutes. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, see none? Any public comment regarding this item? I see none. Looking, roll call, please.
Alderman Santie?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 7B, Foxhole Pub Liquor License, a motion to approve a Class A liquor license to Foxhole Pub at 3308 West Elm Street, McHenry. And if approved, pass an ordinance amending title 4-2-6 subsection D1, limitation on number of licenses of the McHenry City Code. The applicants are here this evening, but I'm looking for a motion to approve. Alderman McClatchy?
Thank you. I will make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Santie?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
I'd like to have the petitioner come up.
Can you please step up to the podium? If you could state your name and address for public record. No one else is moving, so. No, you're good.
Rat Woodmore, 2315 North Woodlawn Park Avenue.
I just want to say thank you. There's a lot of history in that building. You obviously know your history. It used to be called Water Street before Riverside Drive, so, good luck, and I can't wait to walk down there and pick up a pizza again.
Yeah, we appreciate it. The owner of the building is a history buff, too, so he cares about it.
All right. Alderman Santie, go ahead.
When I read the packet, it was very, very good presentation. I appreciate the kind of like the bio and what the plans are, and who, you know, who the key personnel are. You do have the foxhole pizza recipe, correct? Is that part of the agreement? You do have it, right?
She left it on the wall, so...
She did. Okay, I just want to make sure, you got to have the recipe. All right, wish you good luck. Thank you.
Oh, appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? All right, may I have a seat? Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll at your convenience.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Santie?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 7C, is Foxhole Pub Video Gaming, pending the approval of Class A liquor license, a motion to approve a video gaming license to Foxhole Pub at 3308 West Elm Street, McHenry. And if approved, a motion to pass an ordinance amending sections 4-6-8 subsection A, number of licenses of the McHenry City Code. I am looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Cook?
I'll approve.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Santie?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Alderman Bassi?
Just a quick question, how many terminals? I'm looking, and I'm not seeing it. Six? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any public comment regarding this item? I see none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Santie?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Congratulations and, uh, good luck. If you need anything, reach out, okay? Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Next item on the agenda is seven D is Orchard Beach Road Annexation. A motion to pass an ordinance...
Excuse me, Mayor. Before we do that, should we do the, uh...
We can go back.
Go back to B right away so that we don't forget that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, item six, uh, B, amending, uh, sections four dash six dash eight, subsection A, number of video gaming licenses of the McHenry City Code. Alderman Glad? What is yours?
Just, yeah, do we have the numbers that, uh...
I'm sorry. I would, I wish I could look it up, but I can't because I got the online meeting running on my computer, so I can't, you know, I didn't, I didn't have that written down. After the meeting, like tomorrow morning, I was gonna count them all up and throw that number in there, so I don't...
We lost two video gamings.
We lost two video gaming, and now we...
And we gained two ga, video gaming.
Yeah. I don't know what that number is, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm just saying, so if we lost two and we gained two, then really it doesn't change, right?
Then we wouldn't have to do the ordinance.
We don't have to do that. We can just drop it.
Both the five.
I'm sorry?
It used to be five. So long as everything's fixed now.
Are you talking about the number of terminals? Oh, so we don't have an ordinance for the number of terminals? We have an ordinance for the number of establishments. Yeah. So if we lost two and gained two, then we wouldn't have to have an ordinance to change number because the number is staying the same?
Okay.
Unless I'm reading that wrong. Yeah, I think you're right.
So the mayor said D Orchard Beach Road Annexation?
Yeah, right.
So should we just not vote on that at all? Are we sure it's two and two? We're sure about that? Are we sure it's two and two? That we drop two? Okay. As long as you're comfortable with that, we can just not vote on it. Okay. All right. All right, so now going back to item seven D, Orchard Beach, uh, Road Annexation. A motion to pass an ordinance annexing nineteen-twenty Orchard Beach Road. Director Paul Reiki?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had some discussions earlier in the month about Orchard Beach. Uh, council directed us to go ahead and start the annexations on there. Uh, nineteen-twenty, uh, did petition the city to annex in due to the fact that they needed our sewer. So tonight before you is, uh, their petition to annex into the city of McHenry. Uh, more will come after this one.
Thank you, Ross. Looking for a motion to approve? Alderman McClatchy?
Thank you. I'll, uh, make that motion.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Cook? Thank you. Discussion by city council? Any public comment regarding this item? See none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Mayor Judd?
Yes.
Uh, next item on the agenda is seven E, uh, twenty-two twelve Richmond Road Use Vari, uh, Variation. I'm looking for a motion to pass an ordinance granting a use variation to allow the outdoor storage of automobiles, recreational trailers and equipment as a principal use of a portion of the property located at twenty-two twelve North Richmond Road. Director Paul Reiki?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, petitioner Vantage McHenry Holdings LLC is requesting approval of a use variance to allow outdoor storage of automobiles, recreational vehicles, trailers and equipment as the principal use on a portion of the property located at twenty-two twelve North Richmond Road. Currently zoned C-five highway commercial district. The zoning ordinance does not allow outdoor storage as a principal use in the zoning district. Located south of an existing shops of the Fox River Commercial Subdivision, the development is located on a seven acre portion of the property that is currently farmed. The storage area would be able to store up to a maximum of a hundred and forty full-size semi trailer tractors, recreational vehicles or boats. Um, if council is familiar with FAP four-twenty, this is just north of FAP four-twenty. Um, Continental Properties built on the south side of FAP four-twenty. So this is kind of an isolated parcel surrounded by a bunch of wetlands and wooded area. Uh, staff believes it's a, it's a good use for that property as, as it'll be hidden back there. So the petitioner is here this evening if you guys have questions.
Thank you, Ross. Looking for, uh, a motion to approve seven E as presented? Alderman Santee?
I'll make the motion to approve seven E, twenty-two twelve Richmond Road Use Variance as presented.
Thank you. Second? Looking for a second? All right, that fails. Uh, I'm looking for a motion for seven... What is?
It failed.
Fail and that's it?
It failed, so I'm afraid it doesn't pass.
All right.
There's no questions maybe for the petitioner or anybody? Concerns?
I mean, I'm not understanding where this piece of property is. It's been again to me...
Do you know where Best Buy used to be? Where Planet Fitness is? In the shops of the Fox River?
Okay.
North Richmond Road?
Okay.
So the petitioner obtained easement from the owners of the sh, the shops of the Fox River to allow access to this parcel which is just south of that. It's a, it's a wooded area.
Okay, I think I got it.
It's not, it's not even off the highway. You have to go through the, uh, rear entrance of the shops of Fox River in order to get there.
Really?
It's in the agenda supplement, page one seventy-eight. It shows an actual map.
Okay.
And the location.
Completely surrounded by, um, by wooded, by wooded area. Um, we did notice for the planning and zoning hearing, all of the adjoining neighbors, and, and nobody came out and voiced any concerns. So, I mean, that's fine if it, if it, if it's gonna fail, I, but I'd like to, just need some feedback as to why council doesn't like that.
Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Thank you. I just think it's a bad location for it, the way the trucks have to get in. Man, they have to, I don't know if you ever drove back there, but there's some really tight curves. Um, the fact that it ends on a, uh, a wetland, uh, environmental corridor, I just think it's a bad location.
So we did, the petitioner is doing a wetland delineation on it.
I saw that.
So, you know, and there is a buffer, so they, you will not be allowed to pave or park anything within that area of that, that buffer. Um, so that, you know, there is a farm field currently that's just being farmed back there right now. Staff thought this was an excellent location because it's tucked away. You know, this isn't, this isn't a truck stop where people are going to be camping overnight, parking, it's a fully secured lot with a, with a fence and a gate.
I've got a concern too. What if one of these bins catches fire? Getting a fire department back there is gonna be...
Well, they'll have a Knox box. I mean, it's pretty wide back there behind shops of the Fox River. And, and it'll be like any other storage facility. They'll, the, the, there'll be a Knox box on site where the fire department can get in to the facility. I mean, it's open air, right? So it's not, it's not a building. It's just a sale, it's just a, a storage lot. And, and I will tell you also, we have a huge need for this in this town. Uh, we're chasing trucks out of Thorntons. We're chasing trucks out of the parking lots in our, um, there's individuals that, that live and work in this community, or they live in this community. They can't, they can't find places to park their semis. Snap-on trucks, uh, things like that. We, we don't allow them in residential neighborhoods. This would give an opportunity for, for someone to park their truck.
I agree with you. I, I think it's a good concept, but wrong location.
Okay. Okay. Alderman Glad?
Yeah. Another thing is, is, uh, I do have concerns, and I know what he's gotta do is engineering, but, uh, you know, they did the engineering for, uh, the apartments, and yet we, uh, still had complaints about flooding and everything else over in that area, a little further south of that. And I just wonder where all this water is gonna go? You know, non-perip, uh, you know, seven acres, uh, of land, uh, you know...
Creating detention.
Uh, on what, the wetlands?
No, it's right there.
But isn't there detention there right now? I know, uh, if you take a look at the county map, you see a, a big pole right where this property is.
South of FAP four-twenty, there's two detention facilities. There is nothing north of it.
Then I'm looking at the wrong parcel, but I don't think I am. But like I said, that, that's another reservation of mine. And another thing is, is, uh, granted, uh, ingress egress, uh, onto, uh, Chopper's Way, um, kinda, kinda bothers me, uh, even, even the delivery trucks that have to go in and out of there. Uh, of course, they don't deliver on a Saturday for, in most cases, uh, you know. You have a busy time in that shopping center and, uh, traffic in and out, and you're gonna have somebody deciding they, they want their boat for the weekend or, or whatever. Uh, there's a lot of, lot of things, and, and again, yeah, it's nice to say you're hiding this in a, in a corner, but you don't know what anybody's doing. Uh, they, they have their, their vehicles stored over there. Uh, gee, uh, they have some mechanical problems. They could work on their vehicle back there. Nobody's gonna know, uh, what goes on, so... That's, that's part of our reservations. Plus the fact, uh, what's our agreement with Johnsburg? We have an agreement with Johnsburg as far as Chopper's Way. Does anybody ever look at that, that agreement? Back when they were building their shopping center where pennies and all that was, uh, we had an agreement with Johnsburg at that time as far as, uh, with Chopper's Way for them to connect and, and use it. So I, and I don't know what, it's been so long, I don't remember exactly what the details are, but we should probably look at that too. You know, as far as the use. There might have been something in there and there might not, so...
The petitioner would like to speak.
Oh. Uh, the petitioner, would you like to say something? Oh. How you doing?
Hi, good evening. I'm Nate Weitzma with, uh, Vantage McHenry Holdings. Um, it, uh, it seems that there's maybe not a lot of clarity on what it is we're proposing tonight, but, um, this is, uh, uh, in, in, in layman's terms maybe, um, C-five highway commercial, uh, which would, I think, allow outdoor storage, but not as a, as a primary use. And the idea here, the, the plan here is we're gonna develop a professionally operated storage facility. So instead of, uh, consumer-driven, uh, self-storage, um, which is, uh, usually metal or tin buildings, this would be a secure, fast automated gate. It would operate the same as any other storage facility in that you would, anybody renting, uh, there would be provided a code, uh, and limited access, uh, for those people that are renting only. Um, our, uh, concept and plan is to be, uh, corporate-focused, not necessarily consumer-focused. Um, so companies like trucking companies, JA Freight, local one, uh, equipment companies, whether it's, um, uh, large-scale contractors or a lot of the utility companies have contracting firms with large boom trucks, uh, tree-claring, trailered equipment. Um, those really can't go home. They need a, they need a place to store those. Um, some of the local marina businesses need seasonal, um, uh, long-term storage for, uh, boats. So we're, we're focused on, um, commercial rental, nothing short-term. This is all long-term contracts. Uh, fleet equipment vehicles, so companies that may store thirty, forty, uh, pieces of equipment or vehicles, um, marinas that would store multiple boats, um, uh, this does not be a high-traffic, but it will be a secure, well-lit, hard-service fence and protected storage area. Um, it's, it's, this is gonna operate as a business, not as a secondary storage yard of some sort. Um, this is gonna be, uh, long-term rental, secured, lit and, uh, maintained professionally.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? All right.
And if, if need be, I'd be happy to come back and, and, and do a lengthy presentation and walk through our exhibits, um, that were approved by the planning commissioner, recommended for approval by the planning commission. And again, we've, we've noticed, um, we've been working with the shopping center, um, uh, since owning the property for the last couple of years. They're very comfortable with what we're proposing to do. Um, they support it. Um, they think it will not hinder their business at all. Um, uh, we have, we've had no comment from many of the adjoining properties.
Thank you, sir. David?
Well, we're, we're in an awkward position here. You can have a seat. We were in an awkward position because we're past mid-motion, it failed to receive a second. And I don't know whether the clerk recorded a, a denial or not, but is there a, I think you should ask, you're, you're running the meeting.
Right.
You can either call for us, make sure there's no second. If there is, we can keep going, or you can declare the matter failed and move on.
Right. So Alderman Santee had a motion, the motion, original motion. Is there a second at this point? All right. So it's dead. Alderman Cook?
I'll second this.
Okay. Uh, so now we have...
Yeah, apparently we've got a second.
So, all right. So discussion by city council at this point? Alderman Santee?
No, just to reconfirm, you know, the one concern I had was, um, was that it was not, Director Paul Reiki mentioned that it was not part of FAP four-twenty. And, um, I just wanted to make sure of that when I first read this. And, uh, knowing the concerns about these, um, looking at, you know, the truck route going in and out of this facility, now, it's definitely not a straight line. Um, but it is the back end of the shopping center that has semis delivering product every day on those roads. I, I mean, I know they have to go in and out of there. I, I get it. It's not the easiest thing to do, but it is, um, something for, uh, for people that live locally that they don't have to commute to, uh, like a larger facility up in Harvard that I know of some people before that, you know, travel there every morning to get to their truck in other facilities in Libertyville. So I, I just wanted to throw that in there. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman Cook, go ahead.
So these are commercial trucks, semis, like Estes and everything else like that, right? They care to use your facilities for overnight because he's over the road trucking. Um, I guess what I'm getting at is, uh, this isn't that I pull my boat out of the river and I could go put it in your parking area, right? For over the winter time or anything? So this is basically commercial?
Yeah, this is, this is long-term, operated just like a, like a, a self-storage facility, except that we will cater more to corporate clientele who have needs for long-term storage. Um, there, there's no short-term storage. These are long-term contracts. Our hope is that some of these McHenry County businesses that have a need for this type of storage are going to store fleet, fleets of equipment and trucks here that, um, we will have a contract with a company for twenty-five spaces. Um, this isn't, uh, focused on one person's boat or one person's RV or anything like that that is any kind of consumer-driven traffic. This is more corporate-focused. All long-term.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah. The question I've got is, is, uh, what type of revenue does the city get on this? It really doesn't, does it, other than property tax?
No. I'd have to read the definition of that. I, I don't, so, I don't think it does.
And I know we had approved many, many years ago on Dot Street, uh, something, again, for the community, and the way this was kind of sold at first, that it would be, you know, that we've got... And we've had, uh, problems with, uh, tractors and whatnot, uh, where people didn't have any place to park, and they parked them in the driveways and whatnot, and left them there for weeks. And I know it pulled your hair out at certain times because of the difficulty, but that isn't what this is really all about. isn't what this is really all about. This is more, like you said, corporate and whatnot. I agree with Alderman McClatchy, the fact that it's a great concept, but it's just not the right spot.
If I could just address one thing with Alderman Glad, the taxes. So the property being improved will create more property tax force, but it's going to be very hard for that site to get developed because it's tucked back there and it's just going to sit. So, I mean, that's the only point I want to make. The, we, there's, they, Vantage Holdings has been working on a concept for this piece of property for a long time and nothing has come about. So they've taken it, and they've tried to sell it, and they, so they've taken it upon themselves to do something with that property. And again, as staff, we thought that this was the best use for it, so. And you guys can disagree with that, and I, I understand that. I'm just telling you where we're coming from, so.
Ross, can you remind me what the vote was at planning and zoning?
Unanimous.
It was next to hardly any questions asked, also, though.
Jersey. Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman McClatchy?
No.
Alderwoman Bassy?
No.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, so the church is requesting conditional use permit to accommodate the existing assembly use, which this is one of those properties where it's been in the city for so long that prior to our zoning, so we're, we're cleaning that up by, by giving it the appropriate conditional use permit to operate as a church. But the use variations to allow rental storage space, mini warehouse, commercial office and kitchen space and zoning variations to accommodate the existing principal and accessory structures. The site has operated as a church for over a hundred and fifty years, predates the incorporation of the city McHenry. All such, as such, a number of legal nonconformities exist, including encroachments within the required setback along the street lot line, as well as the existing use of the property as a church banquet facility. The petitioners requesting approval of additional uses to help the church generate additional income, to help preserve the existing structure and maintain the principal use of the property as a church. Staff have included several conditions of approval that would ensure the principal use of the property remains a church slash banquet facility and not a commercial business. Being a non-for-profit, the petitioners also requesting approval of the waiver of the nine-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee. The petitioners are, representatives from the church are here this evening if you have additional questions.
Thank you, Ross. I look at their motion to approve seven F as presented. Alderman Santee?
I'll make the motion to approve seven F as presented.
Thank you. Second, Alderman McClatchy?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Alderman Santee?
Just, and just to confirm with me, Director Paul Recki, that the rental, where it says mini warehouse, that's mini warehouse internally, not externally, correct? Correct. Nothing is going to be in the parking lots? No. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion, comments, questions by council?
If I could just clarify, they do have trailers out there now that are, the Boy Scouts and stuff, so that's a use associated with the church, and so that is, that is allowed, but there will be no storage of anything extra out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment regarding this item? I see none. Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassy?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Uh, next item on the agenda is seven G, forty-seven nineteen Elm Street variance and CUP, motion to pass an ordinance granting a variance and conditional use permit to allow an open sales lot in conjunction with automobile sales. Director Paul Recki?
Thank you, mayor. Um, petitioners requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow an open sales lot in conjunction with used automobile sales at forty-seven nineteen West Elm. Uh, the subject property was previously occupied by a two-story mixed-use residential and commercial office building, but was demolished in two thousand and fourteen. The site was approved in two thousand and eighteen for an open sales lot for used car sales, but was subject to the condition that the property owner repaved the existing parking lot within two years of approval. This condition was not met, and therefore the conditional use permit expired. Uh, the request also involves a variance from the city's fence regulations to allow a decorative wrought iron, uh, in appearance aluminum, allow a decorative wrought iron fence in lieu of the aluminum picket fence within the required front yard setback.
Thank you, Ross. I am looking for a motion to approve seven G as presented. Alderman Cook?
I'll approve.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Santee?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Alderwoman Bassy?
Um, you said the petitioner is here?
Yes. Tom is...
Hi, could you please come up for a real quick question?
You can just state your name and address for public record.
My name is Tom Lemishka for seven-one-nine West Elm Street.
Okay, thank you. Could you just walk me through what you envision the property to look like?
Yes.
Is it going to be all open? Will you have a showroom?
Yeah, it's going to be all open. Just on the one side, like a west side of the lot, I would like to put, uh, fence, something that I can divide from the neighbor parking lot, just for the safety, so no one can drive through. No one, the customer is going to walk around, look, go for the cars. I want to make sure that no one from the neighbor lot can just go, like I use my lot as a, as a part of their lot. Needs to be something that can divide those two lots. Other than that, it's going to be open.
So are you going to have a showroom or an office building?
Office, yes.
It'll be, um, give me an idea of what are you thinking it's going to look like?
I am working on that. Not sure right now for sure. Uh, I'm going to have something that looks, looks, uh, nice and modern, but something that's going to fit like the, the city, nothing, nothing like, uh, too big for now. We'll see how it's going to be in the future, but for now it's going to be like a small office. I believe in about sizes fourteen by thirties, something, fourteen by forty foot, something like that.
Okay.
Also, I'm planning to put like a, some customer parking lot on the front of that office, so.
Okay. And this will be a new construction that you're going to do for your office space?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Not so much that, but how many vehicles do you think you're going to be able to park in here?
I would like to have around twenty vehicles, but that's going to take some time for me to fill up the lot. So my plan is to have about twenty vehicles.
Are you basically selling these off of the lot and that internet-based?
Yeah, internet for sure. That's how the...
I mean, a lot of, a lot of people come in and they say, well, we're just bringing in a few vehicles, and a lot of them, you know, they're selling off of the internet. But you're basically selling to more towards the individuals that are coming into the lot, right?
Yes, that's for sure, yeah.
And, you know, if this gets approved, good luck, because I know you lose a lot of property, what, what you see there because of the right-of-way and everything else.
Right.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? You may have a seat. Thank you, sir. All right. Any other questions by council?
Yeah, you, it just hit me. I just brought up the right-of-way, and who maintains, who maintains that?
The property owner, like any other property owner along one-twenty?
So...
Just like you do at your house?
Yeah, but he doesn't, I mean, half of that right now is pavement.
He would have to, he would have to maintain it.
So he maintain it to what standard? I mean, grass or...
Um...
Right now it's just a hodgepodge of everything.
Right. I, if, you know, you're allowed, and I'd have to look into this as far as the pavement of it, um, I'd have to get with IDOT, but if IDOT's permitting is required, then we would require him to go through IDOT permitting to pave that.
Okay. I, I, just thinking, you know, I mean, he's going to build this facility, he's talking about building a nice building and everything else. We don't want a snafu at IDOT and everything else to where all of a sudden it's junky right outside his facility. So we need to try to work with him to try to get that built up.
I'm pretty certain that IDOT allows you to pave almost right up to the sidewalk or the sidewalk. Um, you just can't, they, they only, they dictate the approaches, how wide they can be. Um, but what happens, you know, on this side is they...
You understand, I'm quite certain.
Well, I do, yeah. And staff will make sure that that happens.
There you go. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions by council? All right, clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassy?
Yes.
And council? Uh, congratulations. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is summer concerts at Miller Point. Approve the special use of Miller Point Park by the city of McHenry to allow for bands, food, trucks, and consumption of alcohol throughout the grounds at Miller Point Park in conjunction with the community concerts on June fifteenth and August twenty-fourth from five to nine P.M. Director Hopson, floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. This idea came about as we finished the park last year of how, what's the best way to basically give back to our community? What's the best way to utilize a space that we've created while fostering visitors to our downtown, both from our residents as well as maybe people that are coming from someplace else? Uh, one of the things that was brought up, um, both on a, on a council level, a smaller council level, but then on a bigger level of our events committee, and our events committee is made up of myself and Doug Martin, the Chamber of Commerce, the Riverwalk Shops, uh, Natri-McHenry County, uh, the Riverwalk Foundation members, a lot of people that have seats at that table, for us to best coordinate how events happen throughout the summer, that there's not overlapping. What we came up with was this concept of, uh, a couple of concerts. Initially, we talked about one per month. Um, July is just extremely busy with feste days and everything else happening, and so we suggest, we landed on two, two dates, uh, the June fifteenth and the August twenty-fourth, as concerts that would be, um, I would say regional acts. We're not talking anything national act, not, uh, probably a little bit bigger than what would happen on a Sunday music, or, um, maybe a, a band that would be along the lines of the Pearl Street music, that same type of band, um, is what we'd be looking at. We would have a, like an intro band would be a smaller band to start off that night from five to six-thirty, and then from seven to nine would be more of the, the band you're trying to attract. Um, the idea with the concerts being done, uh, by nine P.M. was to both lessen any impact on the neighbors, uh, as well as then to disperse people to wherever they decide to go, if it's someplace else downtown, or, uh, make their way home if they choose. Uh, this was just a, an idea that was a, we thought was a good give-back and utilization of, uh, the space at Miller Point, both to, uh, utilize the park and then maybe attract people off of the river and the boating crowd.
Thank you. I am looking for a motion to approve seven H as presented. Alderman McClatchy?
I will move to approve that.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Discussion by city council? Alderman Glad?
Yeah. As far as the alcohol goes, uh, is there going to be a cutoff period before nine, nine P.M.?
Uh, what we typically do with any of our concerts, uh, is say, all right, no more sales at eight forty-five. So finish what you have so that you're not lingering past that nine P.M. date timeframe, excuse me.
So in other words, they could be drinking from five to eight forty-five at a concert, but they got fifteen minutes to sober up and leave?
If that's how you choose to look at it, yes.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
All right.
Alderman Santee?
Who, who's serving the alcohol?
All Marine Retro, the existing liquor license holder. We just try to keep it clean at that point and not bring in somebody else, like Shamrock's the Fox, for us to go through the, the exercise of bringing, giving our own liquor license. It's just convoluted. We're trying to just keep it simple and, uh, have a smaller event. Again, we're not, for, for these, we probably won't even bring a number of craft vendors. It really is a couple of food trucks, uh, as well as the, than the music. Not anything that's going to be this big, like a Light the Night event is a bigger-scale event. Shamrock's the Fox is a much bigger-scale event. We're not looking for anything on that scale for this. Thank you.
And just to follow up, uh, idea, number of food trucks, and they'll be under the same requirements that you're, you're doing for food truck fees and things like that for other events?
Yes. No, no more than four food trucks. That would be the absolute max. I think we'd probably look at, initially, I would say, maybe two food trucks and maybe one dessert truck, like, uh...
Yeah.
You know, Riverside Chocolate Factory or something, we bring them down, and then a couple of food trucks to, we'll see how they, how they're received. For Light the Night, we do usually have four to five food trucks, and for Shamrock's the Fox, we had six, and at one point we had seven, seven total food vendors.
And food trucks, they do not sell alcohol, correct?
They do not sell alcohol, correct.
Thank you.
Alderman, uh, Glad?
Yeah, okay, so this, these events are from five to nine P.M. Uh, how are we going to clear them out of Miller Point Park, uh, after nine o'clock? I mean, you know, I'm looking at them saying, June fifteenth and August twenty-fourth, it's still somewhat daylight out, uh, it's going to start getting dark, uh, in August by nine o'clock. Uh, but how do we move everybody out of Miller Point by then, or, you know, they're going to, they're going to want to continue at Miller Point Park, uh, and party, you know, once they get wound up?
I'm sorry?
So how, how do we end the, end the events, let's put it that way? And how much longer after nine o'clock is that going to last?
No different than any of our other events, whether that's feste days or blues brews and barbecue, or Light the Night. When you shut off the music and you close down the alcohol and shutter everything else that you're doing, um, then we do our best, we work with the police department to gently move them out of the park. We're not creating a line, we're not marching them out of the park, but we're getting people to move along. Um, there's, I think as we've heard, there's not a curfew on the Riverwalk. We're not trying to drive them onto the Riverwalk. Um, we're trying to give them time to exit the park and do whatever they choose to do, and it's not ten o'clock at night like the feste days, eleven o'clock at night, um, something that was much more, much less invasive. So closing all the doors, turning off the music, it's time to go. You don't have to leave, but you can't stay here, kind of adage?
Any other questions, comments? Want from the public, I'd like to make public comments regarding this item? Come on. I think they're not in the park, they're going to be in the park, and they're going to go to the establishments in town, which is, I, I go to a lot of these events, and I really don't see a lot of people who are way over served. And I think the police department does a great job. Um, I just like to see personally, a lot of things like this, in, in the use of the Riverwalk. For that, building a great Riverwalk and the events like this, will draw a lot of people to town, and I think a lot of residents are coming around. Thank you. We knew you had to go. What's your, what's your name? Michael Pollard. Okay. And what's your address? Two zero zero seven Spring Street, Green Avenue. You got that? Thank you. I thought you were just going to say something real quick, otherwise I had jumped, but you had... Call the room.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassy?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh.
I will recuse myself due to a conflict on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Mike, for hanging out this evening. You were the last on the agenda. Um, we, uh, brought this, I brought this forward to council a few weeks back for a discussion item, and council directed me to go ahead and, uh, get the easement created with an agreement for the homeowners association of Old Mill Ponds to utilize a lot that the city owns to install a well, a high-capacity well to replenish their pond and water systems in their neighborhood. So before you tonight is that agreement with the easement documents, and I'll be here to answer any questions. Motion to approve seven-nine? Alderman Cook?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second, Alderman McClatchy?
Thank you. Uh, just to, uh, we went through this and had no problems with it, and I'm glad you showed up and gave us insight about Miller Park, too, so.
Thank you. That's a second.
Yeah, just for clarification, I'm, I'm looking at the map here right now, so the well-on-access easement will only be half of that, correct?
That's correct. We wanted to maintain a portion, well, during the discussion, we wanted to maintain, so we had access to the park. If there was ever an, an idea or, uh, to get a bike path or a sidewalk into Peterson Park, if you expand it to the south, we wanted to leave that there, so.
Right. And there's more than enough room there, so I'm glad that, uh, we as a city are able to help them out.
And they are very happy, too.
I have a question. So Alderman Santee's not going to be on the vote, right? Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassy?
Yes.
I had one, I would have said one thing. The community gardens, I sent out an application or posted an application online for our community, a rentable community gardens at the Peterson Farm, uh, that was put out today. So there's eight gardens, eight four-by-ten gardens, uh, fifty dollars each for the season, and there's an, an online application that you can fill out, the first eight will have, uh, the rights to that for the season.
Suzanne, the floor is yours.
Hi, everybody. Um, I just wanted to, um, just state for the record that, uh, it is Public Service Recognition Week. Uh, it's a national, uh, recognized week, um, to recognize, uh, public servants, and so I just wanted to publicly thank our staff here, um, at the city, uh, the department directors, obviously, who are here with us this evening and, um, most Mondays, um, chatting about city business, um, as well as, um, all of our staff on the street, uh, and in the office, um, for their, for their support and, um, service to the city and the citizens and businesses in McHenry. Um, and on behalf of Ross, who has stepped out, I just wanted to remind everybody about the comprehensive plan workshop, um, that is taking place here, um, at City Hall next Monday, the thirteenth, at six P.M. Um, that's a workshop primarily for the city council, but, um, that's open to the, to the public as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Director, uh, we're, we're gonna be having the big garbage pickup, and last year there were a lot of hiccups. So, could you please, um, give us an overview of what will be allowed, picked up this year, and anything else that the residents need to know, please?
Yes, I can give that to you, and yes, it is next week on your regular garbage day. So, make sure, you know, for the people, you make sure on the regular garbage day. Um, and this will be posted on our website. We're gonna send a nixle out, and we'll be on our social media. Uh, but it is unlimited curbside bulk item cleanup. So a bulk item is considered, like, to general guys, be a bulk item, is something a resident would take, like, if you were moving from residence, that is too big to fit in a garbage bag, or your toter. Um, so, you know, I think of it lamps, chairs, they will take mattresses, they would like them to be bagged, um, you know, things of that nature. It's not supposed to, or 50 pounds or longer than 50 feet. They will take carpeting, but it needs to be rolled, and, and like wrapped up, and it can be no longer than five feet or two feet in diameter. But things they will not take are like construction debris items, landscape waste, you know, things of the appliances, electric, you know, e-waste, household hairs, those materials, uh, any paint, things like that, um, batteries, tires, those are things like that they won't take. There'll be a descriptive thing that we will put out, and I will, I'll email it to you all, council members, so you all have it as well.
Thank you, and a couple of follow-up questions. Um, last year, I actually spoke to Flood Brothers, and they said there are only five items that we will pick, that we will pick up, and they named them all to me. Um, so it seems like it's a little bit different this year, but if there are issues, who do the residents call? Do they call you, City Hall, or Flood Brothers?
I would tell them, "Just call me."
I'm sorry to hear that for you.
Well, I have a direct line with Flood Brothers, so I can get ahold of them probably faster than them.
Okay, thank you so much for providing this information.
You're welcome.
Any other council comments? Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the fact that, uh, this is a great program for all our residents, and all our residents, most of our residents pay for that, uh, service, and we should get that out there as much as possible. We should get it out on Facebook, uh, you know, besides the city website, uh, any, and maybe even to the hairfold, uh, a, a blurb, so that, uh, like I said, so we advertise it as much as possible. Uh, like I say, our residents pay for it through the services, uh, that they pay, you know, for bags and, as well as the totes, and, uh, you'd hate for some, some residents not to be able to take advantage of this program.
Like I said, there will be a nixle, it will be on our social medias, Facebook, and-
Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Thank you. As long as we're talking about picking up, great job picking up the branches. Within two days, everything was gone, then I saw.
Thank you, I'll pass it on. I didn't pick up a branch myself, so I'll pass it on.
Go ahead, Alderman Cook?
Director Hopson, um, have you come up with inspection reports for the playgrounds?
I do not have that yet.
And, uh-
We have, no, I'm gonna take that. We do have a, we do have a playground inspection, a parks inspe-, we already have a playground inspection form in place. I don't have a parks inspection form in place yet.
So you have playground, the playground equipment, is anything inspection?
We've always had that, yes.
I'd like to see one. Okay, and then, uh, how, with, with Shamrock on the, on the box, uh, do you have any numbers, how, uh, how many outsiders came in, or, uh, how many residents were through credit cards, through money laundering? I'm sorry.
So it usually takes about two months to, for them to run that report, through the agency that we partner with. Natri McHenry County uses a tool called Datify that uses cellphone data. It takes them about two months to put that together. They can put a, a geo-fence and say, "For this specific area, can you tell us where these people came from, how many people?" And they can break that down. And so I do not have that information currently, but we're working on with, uh, working with Natri McHenry County on that.
I remember the days when we used to be able to tell how many of our residents were, percentage of our residents out there, when we had 60 stickers, all you had to do was go out and look at the cards. However, nowadays, we can't do that.
All right, is that it? Uh, I look for a motion to adjourn. Alderman, uh, Santee?
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman McClatchy, for a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassy?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.